Alrighty, good afternoon Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you. Welcome to open session for today, Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, for the Board of Commissioners Directors Work Session. We are on topic two now. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined in the room with Commissioner Jerry Willey, Commissioner Nefisifi, and Commissioner Jason Snyder. Commissioner Pam Treese is excused. So turn it over to Anne Ober.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for the opportunity to come forward today to talk about our general revenue and resilient transportation funding options. So I came to you a couple of months ago to start a discussion with you during the budget process around how we are going to discern options for solving some of our general fund woes and concerns in the budget. And so we have been partnering with Marina and Company, which has been absolutely delightful, to look at both that overarching question of how do we address our revenue options for the general fund? And then to look more specifically how we improve the resilience of the county's transportation capital project funding by proposing long-term sustainable funding and financing options that reduce reliance on the general fund. So we have a tactic that feeds into that whole and we're looking at a variety of those pieces and components today. Just so I say it out loud now, this is not the only time we're going to be here. We will be back in October as a team to talk about some next steps. And then in January, you will be receiving the final proposal from Marina about how they would recommend we start addressing this. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the other two who are on the dais with me today. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director. And also we're leading the transportation-focused revenue options portion of this.
Thank you. And I'm Tanya Moffett with Marina and Company. And we are the ones leading the charge for both of these projects. Although they are separate projects, they also align very well together. So we have a couple of slides that may look a little bit different than the first time that we came to you before because we have like tried to shore it up so that they're using the same terminology and the same definitions for both projects since they're so similar. Because the scopes of work were done at different times. So we've worked on that. So today, we're going to go through the GROW project or the General Revenue Options and the Resilient Transportation Funding Options or RTFO. And look at the overview, the work plan, and then we're going to look at some of the potential revenue options and how we go about evaluating those potential revenue options. And then we have some questions for you about what you want to see and if we're kind of going down the right path and then the next steps for these two projects. So for the GROW project, we're really looking at improving and having some additional revenue options for the general fund to have some new sources of revenue. So the desired outcomes from this project include compiling a list of potential revenue options, assessing each of those, and then having some sort of a viability amount, like coming up with a number or a way to like evaluate them against each other, and then obtaining board direction on which ones to move forward for to help reduce that general fund funding gap that there is for the GROW. And so for the GROW work plan, we are currently on phase three. We have already completed phase one, which is the kickoff and then the research of the new alternatives. So now we're starting to evaluate the different alternatives. And then the next steps are phase four and phase five, which is refining those funding list options. And then we will seek board direction again at the end of the project in January. So we're in phase three right now. For the Resilient Transportation Funding Options or RTFO, the goal is to find long-term sustainable funding that help with the resilience of the county's transportation capital projects. So we're really looking to find a way to help pay for the misstep 3F and previously allocated funding there. So we are working on compiling that list of the library of potential capital funding options and then assessing each of those funding options viability, just like the GROW project. And then we'll come back for obtaining board direction on those. And then we also have been working with the cities throughout this project. So we've met with WCCC and we've met with WCCC TACT to be able to get some of their feedback as well so that it's kind of in combination with them because it's a county-wide problem, not just for the county. For the RTFO work plan, we are also currently in phase three. So you can see where we're at here and then we will finish up with phase four, which is refining that funding list and then board direction again. But this focuses on the transportation funding strategies versus the general fund funding gap with the GROW project. So we have some questions. What are the potential revenue options that could be considered to support general fund or transportation capital projects? So how are we going to go about this? So first of all, we've got to start with the list of everything that's out there. So we're starting with a wide range of potential revenue options. One thing to note is that there's probably a lot of subcategories here. So there might be things that aren't on this list that are also going to be included in our project. But these are the general overarching ones. We also wanted to note that a lot of these items the county is currently utilizing and could utilize even more or have other opportunities there. So this is the full list of those potential revenue options for both projects. So how are we going to evaluate this? So we're going to look at some of the different options that we have and we want to make sure that we are aligned with what you want us to be looking at. So this is the framework that we've started with. So we've basically started compiling a list of all of the ranges of revenue options. And then we're kind of where this like blue color is where we're defining the evaluation criteria right now. So that's why we're here today is to ask for some feedback on that. So then what we're going to be doing is evaluating those potential revenue options against the criteria. And then we're going to narrow the list. Like you can see here, we've got like 10 options on the left. Then in the middle, you see only like one, four, five, and seven because we're going to narrow those options down for both projects. And then develop a strategy for recommendations and how to implement some of these. So our proposed evaluation criteria is divided into two main categories. We've got a functional criteria and a feasibility criteria. So for functional criteria, it's like, does the revenue option meet the needs? Does it reduce that strain on the general fund? Or does it help fund the transportation misstep portion? And then it also focuses on performance alignment with what the goals are and fairness. And then the feasibility categories focus more on, is this revenue option feasible? Is it legal? Is it politically supported? Those kinds of things. So I'm going to go into a little bit further detail on what those feasibility criteria and functionality criteria are. So for the functionality criteria, as you can see here, there's a long list. There's eight different items. So does it generate sufficient revenue to accomplish what the goal is that we're looking? Is it proven and reliable? Is it stable and predictable? Is it a long-term and sustainable? So is it going to be changing? If it's going to be changing and maybe only a short term, maybe it's not something we look at. Does it align with the existing policies and our operating goals? Does it have a net positive impact on our community? Is it fair and does it enable operations of critical county services? So those are the functional criterias that we are proposing. We can talk about those if there's anything that, you know, doesn't meet the needs of the county.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So we're also, I would like there, before you start applying any criteria to any ideas, have a table that lists out what's already in play in Washington County. For example, there's already a real estate investment tax, but I can't remember if it requires a vote of the people to change it. There's already a vehicle registration fee, but I don't know if we've maxed out the county component. There's already, I think, a small gas tax. But I can't remember if there's a cap or if we're precluded from that or if it just involves a vote of, you know, different jurisdictions or whatever. So yeah, versus, there's a whole category that we don't have at all that is in here as well.
Yes.
And I'll hold my thought on that till later.
Showing my ignorance, what's GRO only?
GROW only. So that's the general revenue option. So that's because...
Oh, I figured I'd missed that part.
No, it's fine.
Oh, there it is.
One of the two analyses.
So one's RTFO.
No more abbreviation.
So the GROW, the reason that that one is only for GROW only is because we already know what the need is for the transportation project because it's to fund those misstep funds. Whereas the GROW is to help fund the general revenue capacity. So it's just the two projects.
Is the presumption there that if we come up with a GRO only, that we would not give misstep a haircut every year?
This is the criteria that they're going to evaluate them against. And they're just saying they're not going to evaluate functional criteria eight. They're not going to evaluate one of the two of them against that. That's all they're saying from this slide.
Yeah, because we already know which ones are transportation-specific.
Well, that's what I was saying. We know transportation-specific, so this is everything but that.
Yeah. Commissioner, I think the goal is for us to stabilize the funding for all of it. So yes, our hope is that we would have a general fund that is stable and would no longer need to take a haircut from misstep or from other spaces in order to operate.
Okay.
So moving on to the proposed feasibility criteria. So is it feasible to implement it? So we're going to look at, is it legally feasible? It doesn't mean that if something is illegal currently, like that we couldn't go and potentially change laws, but we're going to be evaluating it against those things. Is it administratively feasible and is it implementable? We'll look at those three criteria first. And then once we've applied those feasibility criteria, the highest scoring ones will then be used for the last feasibility criteria, which is, is it politically supported? So that way we can narrow down that list that we bring to you instead of bringing you the whole list of everything. So that's where that's coming from. Any questions on those so far?
Pretty important that it's legal.
Actually...
To their point, the law could be changed, but that would be another step.
Another hurdle.
It is. And we have received feedback and requests from some of the cities that we start looking at ways to make changes at the state level in order to solve this problem. We would love to. I think that's a part of the government relations goals. Every year when we come before you and we talk about where their priorities are. But we also know we have an immediate need and that making changes through the state legislature would take significant amount of time. So that's why we have that criteria there. It's not a bad question coming from some of our partners. It's simply for the timeliness, we have to be able to go faster than them.
And at WCCC, there was a big discussion around the politically supported part of it. And that being a priority for the cities, this has to be politically supported, meaning that it's something that the cities would like to black.
So politically, it's not only voters, but cities in general, I think. Okay.
And your board, of course. And your board, of course.
Of course.
Of course.
So then we move on to requested feedback. So when we're looking at these evaluation criteria, you know, I know this is the first time you're looking at this. So is there anything that you see that's missing from this list or anything that you'd like to see removed or possibly combined? We tried to put it together here. I know it's just the condensed version of those items. It doesn't have the full description here, but...
I would just observe that functional criteria six is pretty subjective. I don't know that that's bad per se, but like, that's not that easy to sort of include.
Well, and I don't know if you are going around the table or whatnot.
Go ahead.
I can't only start at evaluation criteria. If you go to slide eight. General sales tax, nope. Can't go there. Targeted sales tax, well, hence my question on the gas tax. But that's all my brain can really be open to is an increase in a county gas tax. But I'm very mindful of the fact that there's an economic, there are economic circumstances there. Oh, but I see you have fuel tax standalone. But I'm not interested in introducing new taxes in either of those two columns.
The income and the goods and services, which two columns?
Well, those two left columns. It's geographically not advantageous to us. I think it does harm to our business climate and also they're under the state purview. And the reason that I want to put this out there now is last year, I had chambers start calling me to ask why we were considering a preschool for all income tax. And I said, we're not, because we weren't. But it was by virtue of an outside group having, reactivating their conversations that all of a sudden it was taking my political time. We, as a board, we only have so much time and so much political capital. And a couple of us had to spend a bunch of time to put that back to rest. So I don't even want, I thought about, well, Catherine, come on. You're going to be future board members. Would they benefit from that? And I'm like, I am not going to take the hit. I do not want to have to deal with the political backlash for a research exercise. I just can't go there. So from my standpoint, the only things that I'm interested in seeing research on are the right two columns because they are applicable to local governments. So I've got a pretty strong opinion on this project right now.
I'm not ready to throw the rest of the first two columns out, but I will ask the question of when we talk about a tax, let's say a transient lodging tax or things like that. Are we talking about the county in its entirety? So can we increase the TLT on city hotels?
It would be the county TLT, not the city TLT.
So weaken?
Yeah, with a vote of the people.
Administer one.
With a vote of the people. Okay. So but that would have some restrictions on it because you can only use so much of it for general funds. So yeah. So yeah, I just need to be able to, when I see something like this, differentiate between what applies only to unincorporated versus the county entirety.
But there also, there is perhaps room for increase the county TLT, but specifically for, let's call it the Westside Commons usage. Okay, so it wouldn't be...
Can we narrow it down that much?
Yeah, we could. And it wouldn't be towards general fund relief directly, but it would take pressure off potentially of the general fund to pay for the operational costs of the entire Westside Commons.
That's a good example of why I would prefer that we remain open. I'm very critical of the two left columns. I would be, they would need to be targeted, purposeful. I'm sort of almost where the chair is on those. But for purposes of the exercise, I would prefer that we at least see if there's something very targeted, specific and not just dismiss it completely out of hand.
That's why for that first column, the fuels tax and the transient lodging tax are the only two that we already have. And so I'm not interested in introducing things we don't currently have.
And we're happy to take that feedback and it adds some clarity to our process.
I think you're hearing what may not be politically feasible.
Correct. Yes. And the only reason that I wanted to jump in here for one moment is because a construction excise tax could be useful to you as you're doing some of the development needs that you've wanted for unincorporated. Not saying you have to do it and we can remove it today, but I just wanted to confirm that that one is also being pulled off the list if that's something you want to remove.
I'm not willing to, I'm with Jason on this. I'm not willing to eliminate anything. We're still early on. But I will say that the chair brought up something, vehicle registration fees. And they're not on here, are they? Am I missing them?
It's a fee.
They're a portion. Like I said, there's a whole bunch of subcategories on these things. So it'd be under like fees and charges.
And we do have, we are under the cap on that. I know that. We only went to 50% of the max. I mean, we being, our predecessors went to 50%. So we still got some headroom in there. Yes, I'd like us to consider that before the state gobbles up that.
I was going to say there was also some support from the WCC TACT potentially and WCCC for potentially looking at some things that could be implemented for both the cities and the counties simultaneously together.
Could we look at a VMT, a vehicle miles traveled for the county?
There are many things possible. I think that's where some of the other screening criteria about the sort of administratively feasible would potentially be a challenge for some of the sources.
Yeah.
And I think to your point, there are those things like the county gas tax and the county vehicle registration fee. Those are shared revenues that would benefit both the county organization, but also the cities receive a share. So I think those are things that we can take a look at. There are some cities that have construction excise tax. We, as a county, have not adopted it for the unincorporated area, but it functions very similar to a system development charge.
Well, we heard last night, Stephen, at the Region One Act, there was a percentage tossed out for, was it 45% of the cars on the road are now electric? I heard a number there. That seemed high, but...
Passenger beer.
Maybe that plus...
Yeah, passenger.
Hybrid, electric and hybrid probably.
Right, right.
I have a question, Stephen. One of the thing that came out of WCCC was to sort of have a slide like this of what the cities are also considering. Are you going to take that back and sort of duck the posts or the list?
That would possibly be a phase two potentially. Yeah.
So can I just clarify what I think you're saying? So we have heard that some cities are also looking at growing their levy rates or doing similar ballot measures. Is that the type of waiting you're asking for in a process or...
I think they're casting the net why.
Okay.
Just like we're doing and investigating everything. So I just wanted us to make sure that...
We talk to people.
Yeah, the cities, just make sure we hear them and we're aligning ourselves where they're going so that we don't have too many ballots on that, too many measures out there. And then the other thing I wanted to ask was the payroll tax and if that was sort of being modeled after the stiff. Is that what we're thinking or is this...
We don't know yet.
Okay, we don't know. Okay.
Just a cut.
Yep.
You have a concept?
So yeah, so this is the evaluation criteria. And then we have a few more questions. Is like, do you have any additional questions that you haven't already voiced or concerns or suggestions about the revenue options that we've identified? Is there anything that we're missing that should be on our list? Or any information that we need to determine if there's support? Is something more important to you than others? We've already heard kind of about the different columns and what might be more supported than others. Or are there any revenue options that you believe should be prioritized or ruled out? And I think we got a little bit of that, but if there's additional feedback, we're definitely willing and want to have it.
Well, and I'll just say on the, having broad questions, is back on slide 13, FE4 is politically supported? To me, it just, it adds more costs to determining feasibility. And you know, you've already got two separate criteria on, is it administratively feasible and is it implementable? But there's a level of research that needs to be invested in simply to answer that question. And so I want to make sure that the cost of research, I call it that, is, there's a difference between increasing a vehicle registration fee versus having a new county-wide vote on something. That's what I'm trying to get at.
So for this project, we did not put any funds aside for any survey work or any outreach beyond this body. It does not mean that our next steps would not have to include that kind of action in order to understand feedback from our community depending on those that were of interest.
Well, and so that may be, if you go back to slide 50, maybe there's an FE4A and a 4B, right? Can't go to B if you don't do A. As a separate criteria.
Well, and I think for interest, first app, and I can only speak for myself, the goal for me is to get this narrow enough from this body about what you feel might be politically feasible, that we then can take those next steps and start that part of the process. It would be cost prohibitive for us to look at more than a few. And so that's really the hope when we say politically supported. We're just trying to get it tight enough that we can do that additional research.
So let me play the bad guy then. And I'm not driving to a particular outcome because I've already put my position out there. Back to slide eight. Is there anything in the first, the second, the right two columns that anybody wants to take off the plate? I didn't hear any.
No.
Okay. That's a lot that has to be researched right there. So I only heard that I was the one willing to take the left two columns off the plate with that, but potentially keeping and learning more about the gas tax and because we have a county one and the TLT. So the point I'm trying to get at is if you think we can do all of slide eight, I think you're crazy. I'm getting a vibe here from what staff is saying is they can't do everything on slide eight. So that's why I'm playing devil's advocate here, folks. We have to take something off the plate.
You mean as far as evaluating it? I guess I'm, like, your proposal is that you do flush out those and at least consider them.
You want to do all of them?
Well, that's what we're initially starting with is we have a, we've actually already compiled a list of all the different ones. And so then we're going to evaluate them against the criteria. The ones that come out on the top are the ones that we are potentially going to bring forward to you.
This is just an example.
This is just examples of the high-level, wide-range options.
So you have the bandwidth to do all of... So you have the bandwidth to do all of that, apply the criteria and come back to us in October is what I heard earlier.
So in October, we will be coming forward to talk to you about some of the highest performers on this list. And then in January, you'll get the full list. And I did receive some questions about why we would break those two things in half. We are, we have a, we have a short term need and we have a permanent need. So some of these are going to take time for us to implement and some of these can go faster. Some of them are fully within your purview and some of them require a vote of the population. So we're trying to bring you options that allow for the next, for a budget cycle and a couple of budget cycles to go better than it did this year. And it won't be enough for us to solve your permanent problem. So we're bringing you also options to solve your permanent problem. That's our goal.
I like that strategy.
But what's the dollar number of the goal?
So staff is meeting on that internally right now. We have a meeting set up for next week to start determining that. We have different pots of funding that we need to to bring you as recommendations in October. So one of those pots of funding is, are we trying to solve our CIP? In this as well, not just missed it, but are we trying to solve for the lack of capital funding that's coming in? Are we only solving for our day to day, the shortfall that we're seeing in the budget currently for the general fund? And if so, I need to tell you what it would cost us just to stay status quo. And then there have been cuts over the past five years that have been detrimental to some of our departments and we are not able to perform at the level we would like to. So we also need to bring you an abbreviated list of what that cost would be to run at that level for both the one to three year mark as well as an onward mark.
Okay, so I didn't need to play bad cop. You've heard the approach and we're short on time.
I like, I just want to say I like the criteria. I thought it was well thought through. It's actually more robust than I like would have just come up with, so I appreciate that. I think it's thoughtful. No more feedback.
Anything else? One, two, three, we're done.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so board and leadership communication. Why don't we start with leadership? You want to go first?
I'm happy to go first. Sure. Ready to do it. Good afternoon, CWS Board of Directors. A few more updates this week since we missed, or I'm unable to chat about it last week. I want to start by talking about the board work session that we had on Friday. I want to thank you all. The district staff were happy at the end of the day. We thought we got a lot of great feedback and hope the board feels the same. Yesterday, we debriefed on all the action items. There's a lot of pages. I'll briefly summarize what those are. We're looking forward to getting started on. So in the coming days and weeks, we'll be following up with an org chart. We've made some shifts since I've been in my current role and want to get those on paper. They're hard to describe in words. The org chart will make things much more understandable. And also be providing briefings on next steps for quick and the forensic investigation. This fall, we'll be back to request adoption of the West Basin Master Plan, which we went over Friday. And we'll also be returning with staff recommendations for a plan to evaluate sure of the billing system, including customer assistance. So more to come on all of those areas. Audit Committee this week will have the first meeting of the CWS Audit Committee on Wednesday at five thirty. It will be held over Zoom and the information is available on our website. Thanks to Director Willie for agreeing to serve on the committee. We chatted about this on Friday, but we did have our mayor's meeting, Joe Gaul, Elizabeth Edwards, myself, the chair. I just wanted to point out, we were grateful for the opportunity to share information about happenings. We're looking forward to the Clean Water Services Essential Meetings this fall. And we appreciated the input we got on the West Basin Plan and that meeting as well as the knowing where they stand on billing and their interest in our pursuing, looking at that further. We also heard they're interested in Clean Water Services coming to present to their councils and answer questions, which we chatted briefly about Friday as well. Forty-six seconds. Onboarding cohort on July ninth, I attended a session of our Clean Water Services Onboarding Cohort with Elizabeth Edwards. We shared our thoughts on leadership and answered questions. This is a new program that's designed to help new employees get their bearings at Clean Water Services. Once a month, over the course of six months, the cohort travels to different locations. They hear about the history of how we started as Unified Sewage Agency. Learn all about our integrated permit, chatting about and understanding all the other departments and throwing the lab and and different facilities. So when I started, I learned how to fill out my time card and that was about it. So I think this is really a good add. With that, I will close my announcements.
Well, if I could remind all of us, but since I haven't updated the roundtable plan and I don't know that I'll get it in before I have to depart tonight, we added Clean Water Services Work Session Day on Friday, October eleventh. So I think we have, I meant to say the tenth, yes, the tenth is Friday. Thank you for catching my mistake. We have the Washington County Roundtable, August fourteenth. I believe we have another one, September fifth. Then we'll have this, we have an October, Washington County and a November and a December, but we have this added October tenth. And then we have another CWS Work Session Day in November. So Kevin, I think if you could just put a hold on Friday, the fifth, if we don't already have one, that would be awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
And let's see, for tonight's agenda, I realize we have some CWS things on the consent agenda. But after that, we're gonna have a really long meeting, I bet. So feel free to depart.
Okay.
Or just attend by Zoom. Keep it simple. So Ms. Angie, how about you? Or would you like Alex to go first?
Uh, we do straws. I like to do the long one or short one, whichever one you, whichever way you want to look at it. So good news, our bond sale for the misstep bonds, one hundred and fifty million was held earlier this month. The sale was coordinated with Piper Sandler and Company and supporting Bond Council. There were eleven firms that expressed interest and eight bids were received. This is actually an excellent turnout, clearly demonstrating the value of the strong credit rating. The bonds were awarded to Morgan Stanley. An amount of one hundred and thirty-six point nine million and a premium of thirteen point seven million. Our debt service is twelve million annually over seventeen years with the total of sixty-eight point three million in interest over the life of the bonds. The true interest cost is three point seven seven percent. So but this is where, and you've heard me talk about bond ratings, but us having a triple A bond rating really helps keep that borrowing cost low, which means that we have greater spend capacity to invest in the community. And the sale closed on July seventeenth.
And their tax exempt, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We have progress on library and public safety levies as directed by the board. They are now officially on the ballot for November fourth. That filed each measure last week with the Elections Division that resulted in each levy being assigned measure numbers. Measure thirty-four dash three, four, five for library. Thirty-four dash three, four, six for public safety. The final round of public opinion research is in the field and interviews will continue until August first. This final round is meant as a final check regarding the ballot language your board has already approved. Although we don't see anticipate a change in course due to the survey findings, as a reminder for members of the public, we've already conducted two rounds of surveying, there still could be time to withdraw one or both measures and resubmit at your board's direction. We should have top line results to share with your board at the August fifth work session. I had the opportunity to attend the NACO Conference, the National Association of Counties Conference in Pittsburgh, and man, it was hot and humid. Also, as a reminder, I have the honor of serving on the National Association of County Administrators Board. So we met in person at NACO and had several county administrator focused sessions. Of no surprise, federal funding was top of mind at that conference, not only the impact on federal grants and contracts, but the looming federal budget impacts. I will be emailing out to your board a resource document that NACO had put together with their analysis on the federal budget.
It was in our packet.
Oh, I did. Okay, perfect. Perfect. Then I'm even ahead of myself. So that's great.
Prior topic.
Yeah, so that's. So I would encourage you, it's a good, like, they have a good summary just to kind of get a Cliff Note feel of the federal budget. And just really appreciate NACO's leadership in in this work. It also helps supplement just our work of our federal lobbyists and Vance, Vance Goak and Associates and our GR team. I will be on vacation starting July twenty-seventh through August second, visiting family in Minnesota. And I will be trying to limit my work time during this. Smile. And during this time, Marnie Kyle will serve as acting.
Let's see if I did a head count. Okay, Tanya's gone. Chair's, Commissioner Teresa's gone.
No, she's back.
Oh, shoot. Now she's not back though. Oh, shoot. Shot on Monday, I thought.
Hey, you're pro temp, pal.
I'm just saying.
What are you saying?
When the cat's away, mice away.
You rabble rousers.
We get some stuff done, Jason. You need to.
You're right, there's three of you. You can change the world.
Chair, missionaries.
I'm sure you watched this one.
I will, but what Tanya didn't say upfront is that we saved the second best for last today and she won't be here, so I don't know how that week's gonna go. Find out. Just two quick notes for county, the county received a great result, the Oregon Supreme Court in a case involving a petition for review of the denial of concealed handgun license, where the applicant was denied the CHL by the sheriff's office after failing to disclose a previous felony conviction. Initially, this, the trial court in this instance ruled against the county. We appealed to the Court of Appeals and prevailed there. The applicant then petitioned the Supreme Court for review and they denied his review, thus ending the appellate process. So great result for the county. I'd like to specifically call out Assistant Senior County Council Kim Stewart for her work on this case. And then just an admin note, as you're probably already aware, a significant portion of the county council's office will be attending the Oregon Association of County Council's annual meeting this week in Lincoln City on Thursday and Friday. We will have an attorney physically in the county council's office, but of course, everybody at the at the conference will be reachable by phone and electronic means. Thank you.
But since you mentioned handguns and every time handgun shows up anywhere, I think, oh, right, I keep meaning to ask county council. I would benefit from a reminder of what happened with that legislation with handguns and background checks that some judge and I think Carney County held in abeyance and just where all that is because I think a couple of years ago, there was some legislation that would have put additional pressure on the the handgun licensing
Right.
permits that our sheriff does and too much time has passed and I can't remember what state of affairs things are in.
Okay, we'll get you an update.
That'd be great. Thank you. Alrighty, so now it's board time.
I'll go first. I haven't gone first for a while.
Thanks.
So a couple of things happening in District Four in our two small cities, Banks and North Plains. So in Banks, as you know, they're having, they have a lot of opportunity for growth with Hampton Lumber selling that property with the golf course now being converted to future housing. So and on both sides of their city. So lots of things going on there. I met with Banks Mayor Marsha Kirk last week and she just reviewed some of the processes and things, some of the complications they're going through. So with that, and then also in North Plains, their mayor, Ariel Goodwin, resigned last Tuesday. She's seeking health treatment out of state, cannot be in attendance with city council meetings and their charter requires physical attendance. So he can't be missing for more than sixty days and she has exceeded that, I believe. And so she has resigned. And they will be looking for a new mayor. I had a meeting with Aging and Veteran Services and Marnie gave a great presentation on the impact of federal executive orders and funding, of course. So that was a good update for that. Thank you, Clean Water Services. It was a great all day session last week and it's always informational. Your packets are phenomenal. So thanks for that information. Last night I attended the Region One Act in place of Commissioner Snyder as he was at Acre. So Stephen and Jessica, of course, thanks for helping me out there on text. We were talking back and forth and that's a, that Region One Act has a considerable different mentality than Northwest Act. And so it was always interesting to hear what their goals and where they think this thing should be going. And then Ryan Winchimer from ODOT kind of outlined it with the number of projects that we've already got in the queue. So why are you trying to add more projects? Was the message I got there was, it was an interesting thing. This morning, I attended the Washington County Chamber of Commerce to make a presentation with Lisa on the library levy. Commissioner Snyder was there supporting DA Barton and he was making a presentation on public safety. And we were asking the chamber, of course, to endorse both of those levies. And we should hear back reasonably soon because they don't have another board meeting until September. So they wanted to get that on record that they were taking care of that. Tomorrow I have a tour of Stimson Lumber out in Gaston. I haven't been through their facility, so that'll be interesting. Tomorrow night, I have the Clean Water Services Audit Committee meeting. And then, of course, going into the weekend, we don't forget to go to the fair. Because, you know, lots of good stuff happening there. I'll be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday mornings to feed breakfast to the four H kids, which is always a fun time as well. And then Saturday night is the Washington County Livestock Association Steak Dinner, which is also phenomenal. But I think it's sold out. It's sold out every year. So I happened to snag a few tickets. But anyway, so lots of fair activity going on this weekend. That's all I got.
Thank you. Who's next?
I can go. Came back from vacation and hit the ground running Thursday morning of last week, had briefing on some labor negotiations. We had our CWS all day on Friday. Monday, yesterday had one-on-ones with the county auditor, the Clean Water Services Acting CEO and General Manager and with the chair and then an acre meeting last night. Morning, Commissioner Willie covered the Washington County Chamber Board's work on the levy. And Thursday, I'll be meeting in a one-on-one with the county administrator. Saturday, the Oregon State University Extensions, folks have not just invited, but followed up multiple times, as I understand, to make sure that I know that there's a master gardener event happening in Tiger at the family park. And they really want my attendance, so I am gonna go. But I thought I'd highlight that since it mattered to them a lot and we'll get that out as being known in more of the community. And then next week, I think we're, we still have the tour next Tuesday of the Marion County Juvenile.
Yeah.
That's still.
So bummed I'm.
That's still happening. Okay. One other update from my district that I I think everybody probably saw that the King City City Manager's leaving.
Yes, he's going to Troutdale. Good for him.
What maybe, what maybe, I would agree. What may be less clear is I believe that the, I saw communication that the same day or the day after that the mayor relieved him of his duties effective immediately? of his duties effective immediately. So I just want to make sure you all know.
The, the city manager.
And so that may be news you didn't have. And I'm a little troubled by that, but it is what it is. So I'm just reporting that out. That's all I got.
Since our last meeting last Tuesday, I've been sick and been working remotely. I've been recovering from persistent laryngitis, I feel like. And I'm glad to share that my voice is finally on the mend, though. Last week, I continued my work engaging directly with our community. I met with Central Cultural, who convened a conversation with community partners to discuss concerns about federal immigration enforcement, Oregon sanctuary laws and the upcoming county decisions, like the Access and Opportunity Resolution in Order, that could affect our most vulnerable neighbors. I also want to thank Clean Water Services for a well-done Friday presentations and trainings, opportunity to learn, to do a bit of a deep dive into the operations of Clean Water Services. The West Basin update was particularly fascinating and it reminded me of my time serving on the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission. Always privileged to see how this vital work supports public health and our environment and long-term resilience. So thank you to Clean Water Services. I appreciate everything I learned from you all. And then lastly, I want to briefly speak to the request I shared with you all ahead of today's meeting, specifically the proposal to include in the Access and Opportunity Resolution in Order that reflects Oregon sanctuary laws. The addition I sent to the board, the following language, whereas the state of Oregon has enacted laws establishing Oregon as a sanctuary state, limiting the use of public resources to enforce federal immigration laws and affirming the rights of all residents to access services without discrimination. This language is drawn directly from, obviously, as you know, from the state statute. But more importantly, it reflects what I heard consistently from members of our communities, including our immigrant and refugee communities, that clarity matters when government documents speak in vague or general terms, the most vulnerable among us are left unsure of where they stand. This proposed addition isn't about legal alignment, it's about trust. It's about making clear what Washington County recognizes and upholds the protection our state has already put in place. I'm not offering this as a final word, but as a contribution to the conversation, I hope will continue later on this afternoon when I make my motion to amend the resolution. I believe this small addition can help us bridge the gap between legal compliance and the moral clarity our communities are asking for. Thank you for your, for your consideration. And I welcome your thoughts and look forward to the discussion when I bring this motion forward.
Thank you. All right, I want to make.
Oh, actually, I did have time.
We've moved on. I just want to make sure that you saw the memo by email from Marnie Kyle and the memo from Rebecca Miller with regard to Oregon Project Independence and related work. It's quite a hit to the funding as a result of the state legislature and really sad to go from being able to current, to service the 65 current residents to, down to a low of five, a max of 20 over this next biennium. On North Plains, things are moving fast. For in advance of the Chair Mayor's meeting that we had a week ago yesterday, I reached out to the city council president because I'm concerned that, I don't know what kind of briefing they've gotten from their mayor or their city manager or for the library staff and their, their contract police chief on our levies, public safety and library. In between that time of my reaching out to him, then the meeting is when the mayor resigned. So bottom line, he has a normal day job and his hands are full trying to figure out with the city council the next steps there. So I included you on a couple of the email correspondence that I had with, with that city council president. So in the interim.
What is that person's name, just so?
Aaron, I can't remember his last name right now.
Maybe he will tell us in about 20 seconds.
But anyway, it's, it's right on the city, city website. I found it through that or the minutes. So I'm, and the next Chair Mayor's meeting is Monday, August 14th. So I would prefer that they have somebody who can attend. On Monday, I had a tour of the current transfer station set up at Pride. They're doing great things. The cool thing is I got to see the electric truck, the all-electric truck and the split load truck and a regular old truck tipping all at the same time. It was hilarious how it worked out. The rest of the time, I spent trying to correct the represent, misrepresentation of our Access and Opportunity Resolution. And that included a pre-meeting as well as the actual interview on Think Out Loud this past Monday. So thank you in advance to Pro Tem Commissioner Jerry Willey, since I will be out from tomorrow through Sunday, August 3rd. But the good news is your tenure only lasts to the end of the day, Sunday. And then by Chair Teresa's back on point, so.
I wasn't about to give me too much space. So there's your.
Yes, Aaron Dumbrow.
Right. And they'll be getting also their briefing, the levy briefing in two weeks.
Two weeks on August 4th. Okay, great. That's terrific. So that's it from me. And so now, board, we ordinarily have a 15-minute break. If we don't take a break, then we can be back on schedule because I know Topics Four and Five will take a bunch of time. Or we could take a break. Or a short break. So it's out there. What would you like to do?
I just need water.
At least five minutes or seven.
Yeah, we could do ten.
Let's take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 3:25. Thank you. And it'll be in a executive session. We'll take the motion when we come back.